Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Bay with Alonian Marsh Premium, Antay, Colorado. The acronym is ANPAC, I'm the Chief Judge of Counsel Court. Uh, today is Class 69, Class 69. What did we learn in Class 68? Well, we're still going over the Act of Algeciras of 1906, Chapter 5, but more specifically Article 102. And what is Article 102 about? Why are we diving so deep into this? It's because the International Court of Justice, in the year 1952, in the case known as France versus United States of America, right? The International Court of Justice starts to point out, in that case, that Article 102, as an example, in Chapter 5, is one of the provisions that's giving the United States of America and the United States legal and lawful civil and criminal jurisdiction over Moors. What type of Moors? Moors Americans and Moroccan Moors that have been subjugated in a foreign country. And what's the foreign country? The United States of America is the foreign country. What's the foreign corporation? The United States International Organization, right? So therefore, the reason why we're going deeper and deeper into Article 102 is because a lot of Moors don't realize that the United States has been given permission to have their judicial system over Moors. And Moors are right now in traffic court, in all types of courts, all type of systems saying, "The United States of America don't have jurisdiction over me", and that's not true. The United States of America continuously lets you know, in their legislation, how is it that they have judicial authority? And it's because of the treaties. And the Moors never knew this. The Moors hadn't been studying the Madrid Convention of 1880. The Moors hadn't been studying the Act of Algeciras of 1906. The only thing we've been studying is the Treaty of Peace and Friendship of 1787 and 1836. And even then, we didn't fully comprehend what we were reading. Because in Article 22 of Treaty of Peace and Friendship, it talks about parties, and it talks about the word "person", and it talks about the word "will", and it talks about the word "trust". And who are parties and who are persons in international law? States, not individual Moors. No individual Moore can make a self-proclaimed claim or be a claimant to any jurisdiction in Morocco without the state recognizing that Moore, that with that Moore, who's a competent authority of the state, can represent all Moors nationals of that state. So therefore, if Moors are stateless, then you have no jurisdiction to claim. Therefore, that means you're still in a jurisdiction of the United States of America. You're not in Morocco. How is that Moors can return to Morocco? It must be with a pin, right? What do you do with the pin, Moors? You take that pin, and you consent to an application to now do what? Consent back to Morocco, right? Do an application. That way, the Moroccan state can recognize you as a Moore. Until then, everything you've been saying and doing has been patently frivolous and arbitrary capricious. So with a pin, you can come back to Morocco, but you must come back to Morocco to a competent state. And what makes you have a competent state? A competent constitution. What does that make your constitution competent? That you ratified, deposited, and promulgated it in accordance to the customary norms of international law, which is United Nations Article 102, according to their charter. And where did the charter members get their provisions from, their instructions? From your treaty. The Act of Algeciras of 1906, Chapter 7, Articles 120 to 123. So we must understand this, Moors, right? What else did we learn in Class 68? We started learning that Great Britain did not recognize Americans. That Great Britain was basically in a war with what they call their own subjects, right? Rebellious subjects of Great Britain. There was an award with them from 1775 up until 1783. They would not recognize those peoples that called themselves Americans because they were not Americans, according to Great Britain. Why? Because Great Britain knew they were what? Ex-patriots of Great Britain. They also knew they were ex-patriots of other European states. So the only person that recognized the 13 colonies as being Americans was Moroccans. More specifically, the office of the empire, commonly known as the Sultan. The Sultan was an office at that time. It was a position. It was a monarchy. So the empire recognized America, and America is in Morocco. No different than a reservation. It was a colony. It was a charter that the United States of America proclaimed themselves to carve out a small piece of dominion within the realms of Morocco. And the Sultan recognized them as being Americans after they fully ratified, deposited, and promulgated their constitution, commonly known as the United States of America in 1789. More specifically, December 1st, 1789. This is what Moors have to understand, alright? So, as we start to get into this deeper into Article 102 of the Act of Algeciras, we have to understand that Moors have been calling themselves Moors Americans. And that's a misnomer. That's a misconception. But most importantly, what does it really mean? That we've been incompetent. In order for us to now proclaim ourselves as being independent, we must be competent. In order to be competent, we have to follow the norms of international law, right? So, let's go ahead and get into Class 69. That way, we can finish up with the Act of Algeciras of Chapter 5, alright? So let's go ahead and jump on in. And we know we opened up about the Constitution, because without the Constitution, the Moors are still Moors subjects in a foreign country, right? With a Constitution, now you return to Morocco to consent back to a Moroccan government, not an American government. Moroccan government. How do you know it's Moroccan government? Because that's what your treaty said. The Treaty of Madrid, 1880, Article 15, says you must consent and return to where? A Moroccan government in each of the territories. This now proclaims your Uti Positivis jurisdiction that outlines your dominions of your state, alright? Let's move on. Okay. Now, Class 68, we were really diving into Article 102 because Article 102 says, "Every confiscation, fine, or penalty must be imposed on foreigners by consul jurisdiction and on Moore subjects by Sharifian jurisdiction." So Article 102 points out three parties. Who's the parties? Foreigners, which is the citizens of the United States of America, and the citizens of the United States International Organization. Who else? Moore subjects who have been subjugated in a foreign country, commonly known as the United States of America and the United States. And who else? The Sharifian jurisdiction. Who's the Sharifian jurisdiction? Competent Moore state governments that have ratified, deposited, and promulgated their constitution. That have acceded to the treaties, right? Have reserved, deposited, promulgated those treaties in conformity to the customs of international law, right? So three parties, right? So we got foreigners, Moore subjects, and the competent Moore state governments, right there. In one article. This is important for Moors to understand. This is why the International Court of Justice is pointing this out, right? Okay. So what's happening? Here's the case, alright? Out of the International Court of Justice. Here we go. "International Court of Justice reports injustices, advisory opinions, and orders. Case concerning rights of nationals of the United States of America in Morocco." So where's the United States of America? In Morocco. Where's the United States as a standalone name as an international organization? In Morocco, right? This is the World Court pointing this out. So this is a case of what? France versus the United States of America. You see the name they put on there? The proper de jour name that's on what? The Constitution of 1789. That C. Mohammed recognized. None of the Sultans have ever recognized the United States as being the de jour constitution. Never. It's a de facto constitution of an international organization. So the Sultans have recognized the United States of America, right? Also, the name "United States of America" is on all the treaties. That's the proper person. That's the proper legal personality. The appropriate persona suit juris is "United States of America", not the United States. This is why the World Court has put this on here, okay? So that case took place in what? August 27th, 1952, with the judgment. So this case took place between 1950 to 1952, okay? So what happened? Okay, let's go down to what's germane. Alright. So on page 197, okay, 197.
That's Algeciras.
On page 197 of the judgment, France versus the United States of America, 1952, page 197, okay? So, on page 197, the ICJ starts to point out to the Moors, as well as to France and the United States of America, obviously, because this is the case between France and the United States of America, but the Moors need to look at this through the purview of Moors, how Moors should look at this, right? What happened? So, the International Court of Justice, okay, let's move back up. International Court of Justice points out that in the 1906, talking about the Act of Algeciras, was about consent or acquiescence in Morocco, right? So what happened? The Act of Algeciras is about the rights of consul jurisdiction, and many of its provisions assign particular functions to then existing consul tribunals. So it's talking about consul court of 1906, okay? So where's the ICJ pointing out to the Moors? Here we go. It says, "In Chapter 5, which deals with the customs of the empire and the repression of fraud and smuggling, contains Article 102, which provides, quote, 'Every confiscation, fine, or penalty must be imposed on foreigners by consul jurisdiction and on Moore subjects by Sharifian jurisdiction.'" ICJ points this out. So this should be very important to Moors because the World Court's saying, "Everybody needs to pay attention." Who needs to pay attention? There are three parties. Who are the three parties? Oh, okay. It tells you right here. Foreigners, i.e. the citizens of the United States of America. Who else? Moore subjects need to pay attention. Who else? And the Sharifian.
Government.
Government needs to pay attention. Article 102. Because guess who gets to enforce it? Whoever's competent. If the Moors have the competent state governments, you'll get to enforce 102. If you're not competent, guess who gets to enforce 102? The United States of America. Why? This is a treaty with two parties in it. It's a multilateral treaty, keep in mind, but the other signatory powers are not affiliated to this treaty no more. Who's the only state that's affiliated to this treaty now? The United States of America and other Moors competent states. You gotta understand what's happening here. So since the Moors didn't have their own competent states, the competent authority ended up being the United States by default. And they had civil and criminal jurisdiction over who? Well, there's citizens of the United States of America, which are foreigners in Morocco. Who else did they have civil and criminal jurisdiction over? Moore subjects. Why? Because there was no competent Sharifian government. One of the parties is absent, right? But two of the parties is still present. Who are the two parties? Moore subjects and the citizens of the United States of America. The United States of America is now enforcing 102 against all the Moors Americans, as well as all of the Negroes, Blacks, Coles, African-Americans. Because all of them fall under one brand. Moore subjects. Ipso jure, Moore subjects. This is what ICJ is pointing out. Okay, let's get into this. Who are we talking about right now? Dred Scotts, right? We're talking about the Dred Scotts of the world, right? All the Moors Americans, all the Negroes, Blacks, and Coles are Dred Scotts, right? Who are all looking for a remedy in a court? And can't get remedy in a court. And keep asking themselves, Moors Americans keep asking themselves, "Why can't we get remedy in these courts?" Because you're still Dred Scott. You know who Dred Scott was? In the ipso jure, Moore subject. Who are ipso jure, Moore subjects supposed to petition? The consul court of a competent Moroccan government. So therefore, when Moors Americans show up in traffic court, you know what they're telling Moors Americans? "Your plaintiff in error. Your defendant in error because you're coming in here claiming a jurisdiction that's absent of a government. You don't have proper representation because you're not Mr. Bay. You're still Mr. Johnson. Because there's no Moore state that has recognized you as being Mr. Bay." So if you want to be Kendrick Bay, who has to say you're Kendrick Bay? The competent Moore state. Because your name now is on the registration because you consented it back to the Moore state. Dred Scott's name wasn't on a competent Moore state government's registration. You gotta understand what's happening. All of the citizens of the United States of America, name is on a registration, every last one of them. Every last one of them. You seeing all the pictures of them coming off the ships? Huddled up like sardines in a can? When they got off that ship, guess what they did next? Signed off to get a visa or to get a citizenship in the jurisdiction of the United States of America. To be one, Americans. Had nothing to do with Moroccans. But the Moroccans didn't have their name on a list because we were just home. We didn't need to have our name on a list. That's just the way it is. You're just home. But things have changed. Why? Because we got colonized. Now, we gotta restore our states. And when you restore your Moore state, now your state gotta put your appellation on the registration. That way, their state recognizes you as a Moroccan national of that state. Until then, guess what Moors have been doing? That nationality card. Worst part is, they said they're Moroccans, with a Moroccan flag and American at the same time. Cannot conflict the two. So how do we fix this? We can point out problems every day of the week, but what about the solution? What's the solution? Let's talk about the solution today, alright? As we start to wrap up Chapter 5, okay? Let's get into the solution, Moors. Okay, so what's happening? We talked about this. This is right here. This is Article 3, okay? This is Article 3. Article 3, Section 2, Clause 1 of the Constitution of the United States of America of 1789, de jure constitution. And it's also the Constitution of the United States International Organization that was created in what? 1871. Two separate constitutions, similar language. So in Article 3, Section 2, Clause 1, it starts to identify the parties that we've talked about. Who are the two parties? Citizens and subjects. What type of subjects? Moroccan subjects. Two classifications. So what happened? So the United States of America gets smart, right? And they say, "Yeah, let's come up with this 14th Amendment and turn all the Dred Scotts into what? Citizens." Well, how can the United States of America turn you into a citizen? Well, they said in the 14th Amendment of 1868, "All persons naturalized are citizens." Of what? The United States. Why did they do that? To put you under what? To subjugate you to their jurisdiction. What about their jurisdiction? Their civil and criminal courts. Right? We're learning about this, okay? So by doing that, what did they do? They're trying to get rid of this legal personality, right? Whoa, let's increase it. This legal personality of subject, they're trying to omit it. Remove it from the contract. Why do I say that? How do you omit something from a contract? Okay, let's go back to 14th Amendment. Listen. See this word right here? Amendment. What does amendment mean? You're changing the contract. You're changing the terms and conditions. You're amending something. You're going back to change some words in the contract to now present some different type of language, right? That's what amend means. You're amending the original contract. So the original constitution has how many articles? Seven. So it's going back to amend one of the seven articles. And which article is it amending? They don't tell you, do they? But you're supposed to already be conscious to know that they are amending Article 3. Let's go back to it. To remove this status of subject. And once they remove it, then now automatically, everybody's a citizen. And if you're a citizen of the United States of America, guess what happens to you? Now, you come under what? Judicial power shall be extended to all cases dealing with citizens or subjects. They get rid of subjects, only they got left is citizens. Because subjects have a right to what? What do the subjects have a right to? Consul court. In order to utilize and petition consul court, you gotta be what? Moroccan. So you're a subject, which makes you Moroccan automatically. So they say, "Ain't no more Moroccans. Everybody now is Americans." And this is how Moors Americans came to be. Because we all got put under this status of citizen, and we kept telling ourselves, "We're citizens of America, and that this is America", and not knowing that we got brainwashed. We suffered from what? Cognitive dissonance. Lack of reality. All because we didn't understand what they did. What did they do? They amended the contract. Let's go back to it. They amended the original seven articles. Which article? Article 3. And they removed the subject status and made all the Dred Scotts citizens. Why? Because they told Dred Scott he didn't have access to a court. That's a human rights violation. Every human being on planet Earth has a right to petition a court dealing with civil and criminal disputes. They said, "Well, if we would've told Dred Scott that he's a subject and that he need to petition the Sultan of Morocco or the consulate of Morocco or a state in Morocco, then we would've told him exactly who he is. We don't want to tell him who his true identity is." They would've had to tell Dred Scott, "You got a problem with this Sanford guy, right? Dred Scott had a problem with John Sanford? Yeah, you need to petition consul court. We have nothing to do with that." They didn't tell Dred Scott that. And after that, they realized they messed up bad. Why? Because it was placed on the record. Now, the Sultan can see what they did to Dred Scott. If in fact, word got back to the Sultan that the United States of America was doing what? Breaching the treaty. Because the treaty says, Treaty of Peace and Friendship of 1836, Article 20 says what? In any dispute between a citizen and a subject, utilize what? Consul court. And they cheated, Dred Scott. Okay, let's move on. So what's happening? So the 14th Amendment takes place, and in the Naturalization Act, we've been over this, of 1870 takes place. And they put all the Dred Scotts and made them what? They made all the Dred Scotts, "Aliens of African nativity and descent may become citizens." So they made Dred Scott an alien. He went from a subject of Morocco, right? They demoted him down to be an alien, and then they promoted him back up to being citizen, okay? Which was a breach of the treaty. Because in the treaty, it says, "Only two parties. Citizens of the United States of America and subjects of Morocco." That's it. Can't breach the treaty. Let's continue. What else happened? So what was happening? What they did in the 1860s with the 14th Amendment et cetera was a violation of the 1836 Treaty of Peace and Friendship. Keep in mind, in 1836, they renewed the Treaty of Peace and Friendship for another what? Fifty years. Which meant that would've been 1886. From 1836 to 1886 is 50 years. So within that 50 years, they're saying, "You know, we gotta get rid of this whole subject status. It's causing a problem. We want this to be America, not Morocco anymore." We had put all the Moors in an alien status, right? So, in 1836, the United States of America signs a treaty. And now, they're telling themselves, "Okay, how do we deal with these parties in this treaty?" Who are the parties in the treaty? Okay, watch this. You go down to what? Articles 3? Who are the parties in the treaty? Okay, Article 3 talks about who? Subjects. And subjects, right? Subjects. Who are the subjects? Moroccans of Morocco. The word "subject" is in the treaty, right? What else you do? You go down to what? Article 6. What does Article 6 talk about? Article 6, "If any more, not being specific, if any more shall bring citizens of the United States to different parties, of their effects to his majesty of Morocco, the citizens shall immediately be sent at liberty, and the effects restored and in like manner..." Listen. "If any more, not a subject." "If any more, not a subject of these domains." So Moors were all subjects of Morocco. All the Moors are subjects in Morocco, okay? So we're talking about subjects. So the Moors are the subjects. The Moors are subjects, okay? We're talking about subjects that's in the treaty. And the United States of America is trying to remove this word "subject". That way, if they remove the word "subject", now that means there's no more Moors, you see? Because it's only talking about who? Citizens. And who else? Subjects. You see? Citizens and subjects. And who are the subjects? Moors. Who are the citizens? Citizens what? The United States of America. You see that? Parties in a contract. What else they talking about subjects? Okay, now you come on down to Article 24. Okay, Article 24. Article 24. Okay.
This is still in the 14th Amendment?
No, this is the Treaty of Peace and Friendship, 1836, Article 24.
Okay.
Alright. Article 24, "If any differences shall arise by either party in conjunction on any of these articles in this treaty." So who are the parties in the treaty? Citizens of the United States of America and who? Subjects. Who are the subjects? Moors. What type of Moors? Moroccans in Morocco, not Americans. Listen, let's start from here. "And, and if a war shall break out between the parties, nine months shall be granted to all the subjects of both parties." This word "subject" is in the treaties. So what's the United States of America trying to do? Okay. The United States of America says, "You know what? We gotta get rid of this word "subject" in our constitution and the word "subject" is in the treaties. And in the treaties, it says, "The subjects have rights to treaty rights because all the Moors, according to the treaties, can petition consul court." So let's get rid of the subject status and make everybody a citizen, okay? And that's what they started to do with their legislation and their pen. Now, all of a sudden, the Moors go from Moroccans being Moroccans to being what? Americans. Listen. So the Naturalization Act happened in 1870, right? And now, they're starting to violate the treaties, okay? Treaty of Peace and Friendship, 1836. So what happens next? The Sultan's getting the wind of this. The Sultan's like, "What the heck's going on in my dominions of what? Morocco? He's not the Sultan of America. He's the Sultan of Morocco." And he says, "Okay, what's happening?" Okay. So the Sultan said, "You know, I'm gonna reject to what's going on right now with the United States. I see what they're doing." So what happens? "The Sultan of the Empire Morocco did not agree or consent to the following acts of the United States or of the acts of the United States of America, as follows." So the Sultan didn't consent to the 13th Amendment of 1865. The Sultan didn't consent to the Civil Rights Act of eighteen sixty-six. The Sultan didn't consent to the Fourteenth Amendment of eighteen sixty-eight. And the Sultan didn't consent to the Fifteenth Amendment of eighteen seventy. Nor did the Sultan consent to the Naturalization Act of eighteen seventy. All these things declassified and reclassified, Moroccans into becoming aliens, and then citizens, United States of America, that was a breach of the treaties, cause the treaty said, they're just simply subjects, not citizens. Not Americans. They're Moroccans. So the Sultan gets involved. What does the Sultan do? Okay, so Sultan says, okay. I see what you're doing with that Act of Congress of eighteen seventy-one. You're trying to get out these treaties. You're trying to create a whole different legal personality called the United States of eighteen seventy-one. Instead of binding body, United States of America, which is the original name on the contract. So the Sultan says, okay, here we go. The Sultan said, the Sultan rejected the acts of the United States and the acts of the United States of America, by enacting the Treaty of Madrid eighteen eighty. What's that about? Protections in Morocco. Right? So, so what's happening? Listen. So, so the Sultan says, okay, he's summoning the colonists to the table. He's raining in the order. He's making the Moroccans, excuse me, the Americans, right? Come to the Sultan to sign off on treaties, cause what's the supreme law of the land? Treaties. Not their constitution, United States of America, and not their legislation of the United States of America. Right? What's the supreme law of the land? Treaties. What type of treaties? Moroccan treaties in Morocco. Listen to me. So in eighteen eighty, listen, eighteen eighty. So what has happened? Dred Scott goes to court, Supreme Court, right? Eighteen fifty-seven. Keep in your mind that the Treaty of, of Treaty of Peace and Friendship was signed in eighteen thirty-six, right? So let's, I'm gonna give you a quick timeline, then we'll jump back on this. Quick timeline. Quick timeline, okay. Okay, Treaty of Peace and Friendship. Treaty of Peace and Friendship, signed eighteen thirty-six. Dred Scott takes them to court when? Eighteen forty-six was the first time he took it to what? The state courts. And then by eighteen fifty-seven, he takes it to the Supreme Court. All this is happening within twenty years of the United States of America signing the treaty. Short period of time, right? Okay, so what happens next? So now, in eighteen eighty, we're building up. So then you have the eighteen sixty-eight, Fourteenth Amendment, right? Then after the eighteen sixty-eight Fourteenth Amendment, okay, cause right now, we're talking about the Treaty of Madrid eighteen eighty. Why is this happening? Cause the Sultan's finding out about what's happening. So you have the eighteen sixty-eight Fourteenth Amendment. Then you have the eighteen seventy Naturalization Act. Then you have the eighteen seventy-one Act of Congress to change their name, so they can try to get out of the treaty provisions. So the Sultan says, uh, timeout. We need to correct this. We need some protections in Morocco. We need protections in Morocco. Right, protections in Morocco. What's the Sultan doing? He's stopping this mayhem. All within twelve years. So from eighteen eighty, you count back to eighteen sixty-eight, twelve years back. You count back to what they did with the Naturalization Act of eighteen seventy, now you're talking about ten years, right? So the Sultan puts the brakes on everything in eighteen eighty. Now, everything that happened in eighteen eighty, you know, they were discussing and negotiating this treaty before they fully concluded it, so they were building up to eighteen eighty. By the time they signed it, it was July third eighteen eighty. They were building up to eighteen eighty, stopped this mayhem. You gotta see what's happening here. So what's next? So what happened after eighteen eighty? You know what's next? The Treaty of Peace and Friendship, of what? Eighteen thirty-six. What's fifty years later? Eighteen eighty-six. So the Sultan says, you know what? If y'all gonna come in here and sign this treaty in eighteen eighty, or that treaty we supposed to renew in eighteen eighty-six, we might not get it renewed. So you colonists, gonna come in here and sign this Treaty of Madrid eighteen eighty, before we renew the eighteen eighty-six Treaty of Peace and Friendship, because the fifty years would've came to that term in September of eighteen eighty-six. You gotta see the timeline, the sequential order, what's happening. So the Sultan is using counterintelligence to get them to sign off on this treaty, because he wants to stop the mayhem. But what did the Sultan do? He says, okay. I, I see what time it is, United States of America. So let's do this. Okay, let's enact the fifteenth article of this treaty, alright? So we'll come down to the treaty, I mean, the provision of the treaty, Article fifteen. And Sultan says, okay, I, I see you got these Moors naturalized, but they're not Americans, United States of America. You should not be calling them Americans, cause they're not Americans. What are they? Subjects. Why is the Sultan referring to them as subjects? Because that's what the treaty says. He's enforcing the treaty provisions, specific language. Calls for a specific performance of a contract. So he says, okay, Article fifteen. It was about what? Right of protections in Morocco, not America. In Morocco. For who? Moroccans. And he says, okay, United States of America, you know what? Any subject of Morocco who has been naturalized by your Fourteenth Amendment and your Naturalization Act of eighteen seventy, in United States of America, and who shall return to Morocco, so any subjects of Morocco, not subjects of America, subjects of Morocco, who return to Morocco, shall, shall, after having remained for a length of time equal to that which shall have been readily necessary for him to obtain such naturalization, must choose between the entire submission to the laws of the empire, and the obligation to quit Morocco. Unless it shall be proved that his naturalization in the United States of America was obtained with the consent of the government of Morocco. Did you catch what just happened? The Sultan says, listen. In order for these Moors to be Americans, they gotta get consent from the government of Morocco, in order to be Americans. Until then, they're not Americans. But then the Sultan puts a however clause in it. He goes to paragraph two. Listen. Foreign naturalization, right? Moors who've been naturalized in a foreign country, who are now being branded as citizens instead of subjects, heretofore acquired by subjects of Morocco, according to the rules established by the laws of the United States of America, shall be contained to them as regards all its effects, without any restrictions. So the Sultan said, okay. I'm gonna kind of sort of meet you halfway on this. But I'm gonna say that paragraph number one supersedes paragraph number two. That the Moors got every right to come back home whenever they want to consent. Now that you've colonized them. But until then, your laws were now governing. Govern who? Subjects, not citizens. So in paragraph number two, all of the Moors, foreign naturalization of Moors. What, what type of Moors? Moroccan Moors. Heretofore, heretofore means after this date, of July third of eighteen eighty, have acquired by subjects. So the subjects acquire, what's the word, acquired? Why does the word, acquired, so important? Acquired.
Purchased.
No, no, no. So acquired by subjects. What happened? We acquired. How did we acquire a naturalization status? Because of their pen. Right? But however, if, if, if we got acquired as being citizens, United States of America, that means we're also acquiescing. You see the word acqui- acqui- so we acquiesced to being what? To being naturalized in a foreign country. We acquiesced. You see it? We, of the subjects acquiesced to the foreign jurisdiction of being Americans. They are acquiesced to being Negro, Black, and colored African American minority in Morocco. Acquiescence mean what? You consented. Right? Now do you understand why the Sultan said, okay, in order for this to work? These Moors who've been naturalized gotta consent to the government of Morocco. You gotta come back, right? Says you gotta choose between entire submission of the laws of the empire, right? You have to return and get consent and come back to Morocco. And if you don't consent, what happens? What happens if you don't consent back to Morocco? You remain naturalized.
So you remain a citizen of the United.
You remain a citizen. But what's making you a citizen, United States of America? Because you simply didn't choose to return back. Their legislation of the United States of America is not holding you in the United States of America. What's holding you in the jurisdiction, United States of America? Fact, you didn't use your pen to consent back to Morocco. You gotta consent. You gotta return and consent back to a government of Morocco. How do you do that? With a pen, a competent pen, with a competent government. Until then, you're just still naturalized. And that's what the Fourteenth Amendment is all about. They naturalized you. That's what the Naturalization Act of eighteen seventy is all about. They naturalized you. And the Sultan says, I don't like that. However, if the Moors don't consent back, that's on them. It's Islam. I self-law and master. You gotta master self. And the Sultan says, you gotta do what? Consent to the government of Morocco, not America. Go ahead, mother.
But there's no, there's no time limit on that, right?
Correct.
So they can do it. I mean, we can do it.
Whenever you want.
Whenever we want.
That's right. There's no time limit. Okay. Why is this important to understand? Okay, let's continue. The Sultan now, in nineteen oh six, in the Act of Aldiserris of nineteen oh six, he's still reigning in the order. This treaty comes out in nineteen oh six. This is what? Twenty-six years after the Madrid Convention of eighteen eighty, right? Let's do the math. Eighteen eighty, now nineteen oh six, twenty-six years. Right? Short period of time to come out with another treaty. What's happening? The Sultan is now losing grip with the empire. He gotta reign in the order. And all the colonists come to the table, cause he's reigning in the order, right? That's what's happening. The, the order of what? Morocco, right? So listen, so you're going down. So, in this treaty, talks about what? Here's the preamble. Inspired by the interest attaching itself to the reign of order, peace, and prosperity in Morocco. And who signs it? United States of America. Cause the Sultan wants to make sure the United States of America remembers they're where? In Morocco. You gotta understand what's happening. It's a timeline, okay? So listen, nineteen oh six, right? This is nineteen oh six. This is the Act of Aldiserris, and look, same year. Look what happens. So this document is about Mr. Ruth, right? Talking to the Secretary of State, right? So Philip Hoffman, right? Philip Hoffman or Hoffman Philip, it's one of the other. Hoffman Philip. Is in this document nineteen oh six, it's titled what? Fifty-nine Congress, Second Section, House of Representatives, citizenship in the United States, expatriation and protection abroad, letter from the Secretary of State. Right? So in this document, most Moors know you go down page four fifty-nine and four sixty, right? Four fifty-nine and four sixty. Right? Four fifty-nine. Moors know about this document. Cause Moors keep saying that, Moors are Americans, but we gotta stop doing this. Why? Cause even the United States of America knows you're not Americans. Listen to what they say. Okay, this is August third nineteen oh six of this document, right? It's about what? Mr. Philip charged affairs to Mr. Ruth, Secretary of State, August third nineteen oh six. Look what they talk about. They said, sir, there are strictly speaking, no Moroccan laws relating to citizenship of Moors subjects. Moors are citizens. Where? In Morocco. The fundamental laws of this non-Christian country are based entirely upon the Islamic code, no part of which treats of the subject of citizenship. Moors are never citizens. But they branded us as citizens in the eighteen sixties. Then we started calling ourselves, be Americans. Listen, listen to what the United States of America says about you. It says, there are however numerous treaties and conventions between the various Christian countries and the Moors Empire, by means of which citizenship in this country is defined. But, as I understand from the above knowledge instructions, that is not the desire department to call for a report upon such lines. I will therefore confine these remarks to general conditions existing, which may be possibly be of some use in connection with the information desired. Keep in mind, they just finished signing the Act of Aldiserris of nineteen oh six. Now they're now discussing in the United States before the United States signs. Who signed it first? The United States of America. Now it's time for the United States to take a look at it, right? Two separate entities. Number one, citizenship in Morocco may be said to be governed by the laws pertaining to the same and other countries, with the exception, with the exception, with the exception that all persons residing in Morocco who cannot prove foreign citizenship or protections are considered, if so juror, as Moors subjects. So Dred Scott didn't have no protections. Which immediately said he was what? An if so juror, Moors subject, which means he can't be a citizen. He can only be a subject, and all subjects of Morocco get to be lodged counsel court. Because they're Moroccans, not Americans. Let's continue to read. Two or three, Moors subjects lost their nationality only by becoming naturalized in or protected by another country, United States of America, having treaty relations with the Moors Empire. Not American empire. Moors empire. And then it goes on to say, it was established by the Convention of Madrid concluded July third eighteen eighty. As follows, and it gets into Article fifteen. We don't need to read. After you read Article fifteen, it says, the above ruling has never yet been enacted on, and should this at any time be contemplated seriously? A large number of naturalized people. Who are the naturalized people? The Moors, who've been naturalized to think they're citizens, United States of America. So the naturalized Dred Scotts are gonna find out they're not citizens, United States of America. They're not Americans. They're Moroccans. And who else is gonna be affected? Americans. So who's the Americans? The ex-patriots of Great Britain, and ex-patriots of the European states. The Americans are the people who are immigrants with an E in Morocco. Who have a constitution and a treaty that gives them the privilege, privilege of remaining in Morocco. But they're not Moroccans. Continue. So these naturalized people and the Americans, two separate legal entities, two separate persons and others are residing where? In Morocco. This is United States of America talking. They said the naturalized people and the Americans are where? In Morocco. And they will be affected thereby if the Moors know how to enforce Article fifteen of the Treaty of Madrid. Then they could, continue to say, residence in a foreign parts does not affect the nationality of Moors subjects. So it's saying right here, Moors entitled to their nationality as being Moroccans. They're entitled to your nationality, but you've been conquered, you've been colonized. And the Moors government has no means of protecting its subjects permanently residing in other countries, with the exception of a so-called Moors consul at Gibraltar and a Moors agent at Cairo, Egypt. Why are they saying so-called? Why do they say so-called Moors consul? Why does they so-called Moors consul at Gibraltar and a so-called Moors agent at Cairo, Egypt? You know why they say so-called? Cause the Moors got colonized. They didn't have any more states. How can you have a council court? Or consulates if you don't have a Moors state? The state sets up a consulate. There's no consulate. There's no council court, and there's no council representatives if you don't have a state. That's why they're saying so-called. They knew they had conquered the Moors and made them all citizens, United States of America. There ain't no more Moors, according to their legislation. Go ahead, mother.
When did our, when did our Moors government in Morocco get, um, colonized, or taken over, imploded to where our government was no longer there?
Well, George Washington, after they signed the constitution, and they got the Sultan to agree to the treaties, slowly but surely, right after that, of seventeen eighty-nine, that's when they started to enact legislations. slowly but surely, right after that of seventeen eighty-nine, that's when they started to enact legislation to put the Moors in a different status. So in seventeen eighty-nine, their constitution gets accepted. They had already signed a treaty in seventeen eighty-seven. So immediately in, in what? Seventeen ninety, they immediately create what's called a Naturalization Act. That was the first one of seventeen ninety. And immediately in seventeen ninety-eight, they immediately enact the Enemy Alien Act of seventeen ninety-eight and branded all the Moors as being citizens and aliens. That was their first act during, same year of seventeen ninety-eight was the same year they kicked France to the curb. They said, France, we don't need your help no more. We're going to war with you too because you got your friendships over here in America. And United States of America knew they wasn't in America, they're in Morocco. So they're trying to get rid of France. They're trying to get out of the treaties with the Sultan of Morocco. In other words, they're not keeping their agreements and promises, right? So that's when we first started truly losing the empire over here, was sometime after seventeen eighty-nine. All right?
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so now I've gone into that explanation. We go back to the Treaty of Act of Al-Dosers of nineteen oh six. It's about the, the Sultan now is reigning in the order and the United States of America is talking about this, right? They're talking about this also in nineteen oh six, right? So at two different, two different locations, they're talking about this in nineteen oh six, about Morocco, right? So also now, the United States of America, this is the case of France versus United States of America that we got on the board. France versus United States of America nineteen fifty-two, page one ninety-eight, okay? Page one ninety-eight, increase this a little bit. Page one ninety-eight, okay? So what's happening here? The ICJ in nineteen fifty-two gets a ruling. And it starts to expose the fact that the United States of America gets to hold on to civil and criminal jurisdiction over Moors. What type of Moors? Moroccan Moors. But what about the Moroccan Moors? They all been turned into Americans. So the ICJ is looking at the Act of Al-Dosers of nineteen oh six and saying, man, this treaty says, according to Article one oh two, there must be a consul court in order to deal with civil and criminal jurisdiction of foreigners, Moors subjects by the Moors government. But there is no competent Moors government. So one of the parties out of the three of Article one oh two is absent. So the ICJ turns around and says, you know what? It's unfortunate, but we won't have to let the United States of America hold on to civil and criminal jurisdiction over the Moors who have acquiesced to being Americans. They've acquiesced to being Negroes, Blacks, Colors, Minorities, African-Americans, anything but Moors and anything but subject and anything but Moroccan. And most specifically, anything but a competent Moors state government. Without it, the United States of America got to hold on to jurisdiction. Let's read about it. Let's see what the World Court said about Moors. Okay, mother. Let's start from the top. This, this is the France versus United States of America nineteen fifty-two, page one ninety-eight. All right, from the top.
There is however, another aspect of this problem arising out of the particular articles to which reference has been made above. These are the articles which include provisions necessarily involving the exercise of consular jurisdiction. In this case, there is a clear indication of the intention of the parties to the effect that certain matters are to be dealt with by the Consular Tribunals. And to this extent, it is possible to interpret the provisions of the Act as establishing or confirming the exercise of consular jurisdiction for these limited purposes. The maintenance of consular jurisdiction insofar as it may be necessary to give effect to these specific provisions can therefore be justified as based upon the necessary intentment of the provisions of the Act.
So the International Court of Justice is pointing out, we, we have to enforce the provisions of this treaty. It's a hundred and twenty-three articles. And ICJ saying, who gets to enforce it? Is the United States of America or is the competent Moors state? Where there was no competent Moors state, so they're saying by default, the United States of America gets to enforce what? The Act. Let's continue. Okay?
This result is confirmed by the provisions of Articles ten and sixteen of the Convention between Great Britain and France of July twenty-ninth nineteen thirty-seven. These articles refer to the jurisdiction privileges accorded on the basis of existing treaties or enjoyed by the United States of America under treaties at present in force. They presuppose therefore that the jurisdictional privileges of the United States, even after the surrender of British capitulatory rights, would not be limited to the jurisdiction provided by Articles twenty and twenty-one of the Treaty with Morocco at eight, of eighteen thirty-six. This view is also supported by the provisions of Article four of the Protocol of Signature to this Convention. This article provided for the abrogation of certain provisions of the General Treaty of eighteen fifty-six and as regards the Act of Al-Dosers for the renunciation of the right to rely upon Articles one to fifty, fifty-four to sixty-five, seventy, seventy-one, all provisions of Article seventy-two, after the word permit, seventy-five, seventy-six, eighty, ninety-seven, one oh one, one oh two, one oh four, one thirteen to one nineteen. And it also provided that in Article eighty-one, the words by the competent Consular Authority must be deemed to be omitted. And in Article ninety word, ninety-one, the word competent must henceforth be substituted for the word Consular. It is clear that in nineteen thirty-seven, France, representing Morocco and Great Britain, were proceeding upon the assumption that certain of the provisions of the Act of Al-Dosers recognized a limited Consular jurisdiction for the purposes of the judicial proceedings therein described.
Okay, pause right there. So right now, the, the International Court of Justice is recognizing what? That the Act of Al-Dosers recognized a limited Consular jurisdiction for the purposes of the judicial proceedings therein described. And ICJ saying, the United States of America is already recognized to have a limited Consular jurisdiction. Not full power, limited. Why? Because soon as the Moors wake up and restore their competent states, the Moors get back full powers. In the meantime, the United States of America gets limited powers of what? The Consular jurisdiction, i.e. civil and criminal jurisdiction. Let's continue, listen.
The court is not called upon to examine the particular articles of the Act of Al-Dosers which are involved. It considers it sufficient to state as its opinion that the Consular jurisdiction of the United States continues to exist to the extent that may be necessary to render effective those provisions of the Act of Al-Dosers which depend on the existence of Consular jurisdiction.
Pause, you see what just happened? ICJ said, man, it's unfortunate, but the United States of America is to maintain civil and criminal jurisdiction over who? Moors. What type of Moors? Moroccan Moors. Moroccan Moors have been what? Naturalized. What other type of Moors? Moors subjects who call themselves Moors Americans. So the United States of America has civil and criminal jurisdiction over who? All Moors subjects, no matter what other brand they give themselves. Who are Moors subjects? Negroes, Blacks, Colors, Minorities, African-Americans and who? Moors Americans. Are all subjects according to the Act of Al-Dosers, Article one oh two. Gotta see what's happening. So the United States of America, the court says, it considers it sufficient to state as its opinion that the Consular jurisdiction of the United States continues to exist to the extent that may be necessary to render effective those provisions of the Act of Al-Dosers which depend on the existence of Consular jurisdiction, which is courts. Let's continue.
This interpretation of the Act in some instances leads to results which may not appear to be entirely satisfactory. But that is an unavoidable consequence of the manner in which the Al-Dosers Conference dealt with the question of Consular jurisdiction.
Pause. See what the ICJ just said? This is unfortunate. Let's read. This interpretation of the Act in some instances leads to results that which may not appear to be entirely satisfactory. The ICJ is talking like this. But that it is an unavoidable consequence of the manner in which the Al-Dosers Conference dealt with the question of Consular jurisdiction. You see what's happening? Why are they talking like this? This is nineteen fifty-two, keep this in mind. You know why they're saying this? Because the Moors have had since seventeen eighty-seven to get their states back. The Moors have had since eighteen thirty-six treaty to get their states back. Because the Moors have had since eighteen eighty Treaty of Madrid to get their states back. The Moors have had since nineteen oh six Act of Al-Dosers to get their states back. Even when the Charter of the United, United Nations of nineteen forty-five, Article seventy-three said, Moors can get their states back. And now in nineteen fifty-two, the ICJ says, the Moors have had over a hundred years to get it right. And this is unfortunate. Because the Moors are too busy being Negroes, Blacks, Colors, African-Americans, Minorities and Moors Americans. And they're not Americans. Moors are Moroccans in Morocco. So let's read again. And this interpretation of the Act in some instances leads to results which may not appear to be entirely satisfactory. They didn't want to give the jurisdiction back to the United States. But that is an unavoidable consequence of the manner in which the Al-Dosers Conference dealt with the question of Consular jurisdiction. Continue, mother. Okay, mother.
The court cannot by way of interpretation derive from the Act a general rule as to full Consular jurisdiction which it does not contain. On the other hand, the court cannot disregard particular provisions involving a limited resort to Consular jurisdiction which are in fact contained in the Act and which are still in force as far as the relations between the United States and Morocco are concerned.
All right, so what's happening? The, the court cannot, the ICJ cannot by way of interpretation derive from the Act a general rule as to full Consular jurisdiction which it does not contain. So they're saying right here, they can't give the United States of America full Consular jurisdiction, but they can give them a limited civil and criminal jurisdiction over Moors. On the other hand, the court cannot disregard particular provisions involving a limited resort to Consular jurisdiction which are in fact contained in the Act and which are still in force as far as the relations between the United States and Morocco are concerned. This is nineteen fifty-two. So what happens in nineteen fifty-six? Listen, because of this, the United States of America now knows they got what? Legal and lawful civil and criminal jurisdiction over ipso jure Moors subjects. And they have legal and lawful jurisdiction over Moors Americans. And they got legal and lawful jurisdiction over Negroes, Blacks, Colors and African-Americans. Because they're all under one brand called Moors subjects. So what happens next in nineteen fifty-six? So that's the ruling in nineteen fifty-two. So what happens in nineteen fifty-six? Four years later, the Moors are now talking about, yeah, man, see, you gotta enforce A A A, A A two 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 one four one, right? Moors talk about A A two 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 one four one, right? Here's where they got it from. Okay, this is called the Public Statutes at Large of the United States of America. Volume eight, August first nineteen fifty-six, chapter eight oh seven, page nine fifty-four, section one four one to one four three, statute seventy, stat seven seven four. What is this about? This is about Title twenty-two, chapter two, section one four one. The Moors refer to it as two 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 one four one. And the Moors don't realize, you're telling the United States of America to still keep enforcing their civil and criminal courts against you because you're still a Moors subject. While simultaneously saying, the United States of America don't have jurisdiction over me. But you're enforcing two 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 one four one. Let's learn about two 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 one four one. Okay, mother.
Title twenty-two, Foreign Relations and Intercourse, page nine fifty-seven, nine fifty-four. Chapter two, Consular Courts, section one forty-one. Judicial authority generally to carry into full effect the provisions of the Treaties of the United States with certain foreign countries. The ministers and councils of the United States in China, Siam and Turkey.
Stop. So right here, the United States of America says, they have what? They have what? Consul court, which means they got judicial authority. And where'd they get their authority from? Treaties. They just left the ICJ in nineteen fifty-two. And they found out they still have jurisdiction over ipso jure Moors subjects. By what means? Treaties. Moors keep saying, the United States of America don't have jurisdiction over me. Yes, they do. How does the United States of America have jurisdiction over Moors Americans and any Moors subjects? Because of treaty rights. Moors have acquiesced and we ain't enforcing our own treaties. Listen, so now the United States with certain foreign countries. And who's the foreign country they're talking about specifically? Morocco. Because they're in Morocco. So they get to maintain civil and criminal jurisdiction over what? Morocco. And what gave them the law enforcement to do it? Treaties. With who? Morocco. That's what the ICJ said. And ICJ said, it was unavoidable. It's unsatisfactory. But the Moors have had plenty of time to return to Morocco since eighteen eighty. This is nineteen fifty-six. ICJ said, these Moors had at least since eighteen eighty to come back. They haven't done it yet. So the United States is taking advantage of it and now creating what? Legislation with a pen. Listen, so now, section one four one is about what? Judicial authority, right? So let's get into it, okay? Right here, we're gonna talk about these treaties some more. Listen, okay, mother, right here, Morocco.
Morocco, Muscat, Abyssinia, Persia and the territories formerly a part of the former Ottoman Empire, including Egypt, duly appointed to reside therein, shall, in addition to other powers and duties imposed upon them respectively, by the, by the provisions of such treaties respectively, be invested with judicial authority described in this chapter, which shall appertain to the office of minister and consul and be a part of the duties belonging thereto wherein as so far as the same is allowed by treaty and in accordance with the usages of the countries in their intercourse with the Franks or other foreign Christian nations.
Okay, so the United States of America is talking about what? Their judicial authority over what? Morocco. And they got permission from the treaties and they continuously keep talking about the fact that they have what? By the provisions of such treaties, they have judicial authority. They said again right here, by the same as allowed by treaty. They keep telling the Moors. Moors keep talking about two 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 one four one, two 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 one four one. You better go read it. You must understand what's happening here. The Moors don't realize by using that six-digit number, two 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 one four one, the United States of America knows they have judicial authority over you. By what? What gave them permission? Allowed by treaty. What specifically about the treaty? Okay, let's go back to it real quick, we'll click back. Listen, what, what, what about the treaty? Act of Al-Dosers nineteen oh six, Article one oh two. Every confiscation, fine or penalty must be imposed on foreigners by Consular jurisdiction and on Moors subjects by Sharifian jurisdiction. And so since the Sharifian jurisdiction is absent, now the foreigners, the foreigners have jurisdiction over Moors subjects. Article one oh two, let's get back to what the United States is talking about. They just left the International Court of Justice nineteen fifty-two. Now nineteen fifty-six, they're enacting legislation for their courts to, to adjudicate Moors Americans who are still Moors subjects. Okay, next chapter, mother.
The Title twenty-two, chapter two, section one forty-two. General Jurisdiction in Criminal Cases. The officers mentioned in section one forty-one of this title are fully empowered by, to arraign and try in the manner provided for this chapter, all citizens of the United States charged with offenses against the law committed in such countries respectively and to sentence such offenders in the manner in this chapter authorized. And each of them is authorized to issues, issue such processes as are suitable and necessary. as are suitable and necessary to carry this authority into execution.
All right, so what's happening? The United States of America saying, under their Title twenty-two, chapter two, section one four two, is about criminal cases. To, about who? All citizens. Who all citizens? Moorish Americans, Negroes, blacks, and colors, et cetera, in the United States, right? Charged with offenses against the law. What law? The law of the United States, right? Look what they say right here. In the manner in this chapter authorized. And how is it authorized? By treaty rights. United States of America are not criminals, and they're not frauds. When it comes to fact, they're enforcing treaties on Moore subjects. And Moors keep saying, United States of America don't have jurisdiction over me. Yes, they do. How? Because your treaties say it according to Article one oh-two of the Act of Algeciras, et cetera. Let's continue. Mother.
Title twenty-two, chapter two, section one forty-three. General jurisdiction in civil cases. Such officers are also invested with all the judicial authority necessary to execute the provisions of such treaties respectively in regard to civil rights, whether of property or person, and they shall entertain jurisdiction in matters of contract at the port where or nearest to which it was to be executed, and in all other matters at the port where or nearest to which the damage complained of was sustained, provided such port be one of the ports at which the United States are represented by the councils. Such jurisdiction shall embrace all controversies between citizens of the United States or others provided for by such treaties.
Mm-hmm. So what did the United States of America tell you? Okay, Title twenty-two, chapter two, section four, one forty-three is about what? Civil cases. And how do they have jurisdiction over these civil cases? Cases, they tell you, oh, executed by the provisions of such treaties. Then they come down here and tell you what, right? Treaties gave them the jurisdiction to deal with who? Civil rights. See? Civil rights to deal with what? The jurisdiction of who? Between citizens of the United States or others, provided for by such treaty. Who are the others? Since the United States, and who are the others? Subjects. But now they turn the subjects into what? Since the United States of America.
This is France versus USA.
No, mother. Th- this is Title twenty-two.
Oh, okay.
Chapter two, section one four one to one four three, okay? All right. So what's happening here? Okay, Moors, you, you gotta pay attention to what's happening, okay? That's the end of the reading for that. Section one four one, look. One four one, right, so one four one. Sections one four one through, right, one four two, one four two, and one four three gave the United States of America criminal and civil jurisdiction by the provisions of the treaties. Right? That's nineteen fifty-six. All right, so if we start to wrap up, what's the solution? Let's talk solutions, the last document. Let's talk solution. This document now was also written in nineteen fifty-six. It gives you the answer to the test to remedy the problem. Ain't no use in talking about problems if we don't have solution. What's the solution? Here's the solution. The United States is going to tell you the solution. Okay. This document is what? It's called the United States Statutes at Large containing the laws and concurrent resolutions enacted during the second session of the eighty-fourth Congress of the United States of America, nineteen fifty-six, and proclamations. Volume seventy and one report. It's called Public Law eight fifty-six. Chapter eight oh seven, page seven seventy-three to seven seventy-four. A lot of Moors always skipping over page seven seventy-three. They start at seven seventy-four. You need to start at page seven seventy-three, okay, Moors? All right, so what's this about? Okay, let's, let's get into it. What's this about? All right. Okay, mother. So this is about what? A joint resolution, right, Moors? About a joint resolution. What's a joint resolution? That's when the House of Representatives and their Senate comes together, right, with their appeal of both, with their pen of both those branches, they sign a bill. And they hand it to who? President of the United States, right? So they came up with a joint bill, joint resolution, joint bill, that now relinquishes jurisdiction in Morocco. Well, why did they have to relinquish jurisdiction? Because in France versus United States of America, nineteen fifty-two, the United States found out they couldn't hold on to extraterritoriality jurisdiction anymore. They found out they couldn't hold on to the regime of capitulation no more. So how could they hold on to jurisdiction? By acquiescence of Moors. It is the Moors who have the obligation just to simply consent back to Morocco. Other than that, that's the only way the United States of America and the United States International Organization is holding on to jurisdiction, because Moors have allowed them to do it by acquiescence. Okay, let's learn what the solution is. Let's talk about what the United States said, okay? Okay, mother. Start with the joint resolution.
Joint resolution approving the relinquishments of the counselor jurisdiction of the United States in Morocco. Whereas the laws of the United States invest the ministers and councils of the United States in certain countries, including Morocco, with judicial authority so far as the exercise of the same is allowed by treaty with such countries and in accordance with usage in such countries. And whereas the councils of the United States in Morocco are permitted to exercise jurisdiction over American nationals under the treaty between the United States and Morocco signed September sixteen, eighteen thirty-six, and the Act of Algeciras signed April seven, nineteen oh-six, and the exercise by custom and usage the same jurisdiction over subjects of Morocco.
Pause. Look what we read so far. The United States of America saying they're exercising treaty rights, and they start to talk about the treaties. But Moors have been talking about this public law eight fifty-six for decades, but yet you don't hear Moors talking about what? They don't talk about the treaties. They're not talking about the Act of Algeciras. They're not talking about it. They're not talking about what? The Convention of Madrid of eighteen eighty? They're not talking about it. The only treaties the Moors are talking about is what? This one right here, eighteen thirty-six and seventeen eighty-seven, that's it. But Moors are reading this public law for decades, but yet, Moors wasn't talking about the Act of Algeciras. It's right here in the document. Moors have been reading forever. But none of the Moors are talking about these additional Moroccan treaties that gave you the answers to the test. But they turn around and tell you that they got jurisdiction over Moors by what? Treaty rights, right? They said it right here. What do they say? The United States of America got judicial authority allowed by treaty. They tell you right there in your face. What gave the treaty rights? Eighteen thirty-six treaty, nineteen oh-six treaty, eighteen eighty treaty. Let's continue.
Whereas the councils of the United States in Morocco are permitted to exercise jurisdiction over American nationals under the treaty between the United States and Morocco signed September sixteen, eighteen thirty-six, and the Act of Algeciras signed April seven, nineteen oh-six, and the exercise by custom and usage the same jurisdiction over subjects of Morocco or others who may be designated at, as proteges under the Convention of Madrid signed July three, eighteen eighty. And whereas Morocco is now the, is now the only foreign country where the councils of the United States exercise such jurisdiction, and where, whereas it is the policy of the United States to discontinue the exercise of extraterritorial jurisdiction in Morocco at such time as it becomes appropriate.
Pause. This is the part Moors keep skipping. Moors say, well, United States of America got rid of counselor jurisdiction. That ain't necessarily true. They simply put it on pause. What did they say right here? Whereas it is the policy of the United States to discontinue the exercise of extraterritorial jurisdiction in Morocco. Listen. At such time as it becomes appropriate. What is the time that's going to be appropriate? When the Moors have a competent state government. Until then, it is not the appropriate time for the United States to relinquish civil and criminal jurisdiction over Moorish subjects. It wasn't the appropriate time. Why wasn't it appropriate time? Moors didn't have competent Moore states. They didn't ratify, depolite, and promenade the Constitution. They did not accede to the treaties, become a party to the treaties. Let's continue. This gets, it gets more interesting. There, there.
Therefore, be it resolved by the Senate and House of Representatives of the United States of America in Congress assembled that the relinquishment by the president at such time as he considers this appropriate of the counselor jurisdiction of the United States of Morocco is hereby approved as section sixteen ninety-three, four oh eight three to four nine, four oh nine one inclusive, four oh nine seven to four one two two inclusive, and forty one twenty-five to forty one thirty inclusive of the revised statutes as amended are appealed effective upon the date which the president determines to be appropriate for the relinquishment of such jurisdiction.
Pause. You see what just happened? So the Senate, Senate, House of Representatives, get together, joint resolution. They sign a bill, and what do they do? They turn around and get a bill to who? President of the United States of America. Now, the president has the pen, right? He's looking at what? He's looking at this public law eight fifty-six. And he's, and they stand right here. It becomes effective upon the date. The date. The date which the president determines to be appropriate for the relinquement, relinquishment of such jurisdiction. So on August first, nineteen fifty-six, this joint resolution is written, and the President of the United States has yet to sign it even in the year twenty twenty-two. He's never signed it. The United States is saying, well, we gonna wait until the president determines to be appropriate for the relinquishment of such jurisdiction. The president waiting for what? The date. What date? When the Moors ratify, depolite, and promenade a competent Constitution. When the Moors now accede to our own Moroccan treaties of seventeen eighty-seven, eighteen thirty-six, eighteen eighty, and nineteen oh-six. And then through your three branches of government, you issue through your counsel court an order to the President of the United States to do what? Say, this is the appropriate date and time for the President of the United States to do what? Relinquish such jurisdiction. Where? Within your utiposidatus jurisdiction according to your Constitution's dominions of the latitude longitude, i.e. the boundaries and the border of your Moore state. I'll finish the reading. Except so far as may be necessary to dispose of the cases then pending in counsel courts in Morocco approved August first, nineteen fifty-six. Et sec, codified as eight stat, four eight four dot three four, stat twenty-nine oh five, and commonly known as Title twenty-two, chapter two, section one four one to one four three. And the Moors all this time kept saying, United States of America don't have jurisdiction over me. Yes, they do. The United States of America relinquished counselor jurisdiction. No, they didn't. The president has yet to sign off on the bill of what? It was approved, August first, nineteen fifty-six. What was approved? The bill. But the president has incited into law of the United States to relinquish civil and criminal jurisdiction over Moore subjects. But you won't be a Moore subject no more. You become now a Moore's national, what? Okay, as I start to close out. What do you become a Moore's national of? Your state, because your Constitution says it. Everything comes back to your Constitution, Moors. That's the answer to the test. As we close out chapter five. Thank you for your patience. I know it took about two or three classes to get through this chapter five. It is very important to understand the answer to the test, Moors. For the United States of America and the United States International Organization, to now relinquish their civil and criminal jurisdiction over you is for you to enact your own Moore state constitution that's ratified, depolite, and promenade according to norms of international law, and then accede to the treaties. That's the answer to the test. No, you shouldn't talk about problem unless you got solutions. But at the end of the day, we are not Moorish Americans. We are Moroccans. And who recognizes us as being Moroccans? Our state recognizes us as being Moroccans. I end with that. Isma.
Isma.